Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided through the posting, mailing and filing of the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings of the town council on December eighth, two thousand and twenty one. The notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, provided to the Westfield leader in the Star Ledger and filed with the clerk of the town of Westfield. Mrs. Rowley, may I have a roll call?
Mayor Brendel?
Here.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Here.
Councilman Parmally?
Yeah.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Here.
Councilman Katz?
Here.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Here.
You put a thumb up.
Councilman Contract?
Here.
Councilman Dardia?
Here.
Councilman Boyce?
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right, thank you. So Jim, any updates this evening?
Yeah, a couple of quick updates, Mayor. Uh, we saw just reminder, February first is coming fast. Taxes are due February first, grace period of ten days as usual. And we do have our drop box outside, not only outside of the uh, one of the main doors of town hall, but also in the police department and both have proved to be very popular. We can also pay your taxes online as many people do. Uh, just go to our website and you can go to pay my taxes. Uh, there's also a popular way to do it. So that's coming and just a reminder, and again, we the finance committee met this other night and we continue to have a very strong tax collection rate in Westfield, which is very positive. So uh, thank you for the residents for that. Um, second note, conservation center, just a couple of reminders. So we've, uh, we've actually been open, of course, on every Saturday in January, so this Saturday will be open again. Um, and then we start what we did back in two thousand and twenty. Uh, we didn't do it last year because of COVID, uh, but we were able to do, uh, expand the hours to get more recycling opportunities in during the week. So starting January thirty first, Monday through Friday, the center will be open nine to twelve, uh, really to accommodate recycling opportunities during the week. Um, and then, of course, it's open, uh, two February, two Saturdays in February, uh, and then two Saturdays in March. And of course, the center opens, uh, for the season. Uh, again, we're opening up earlier this year, like the last year, March twenty fourth. Um, so we'll have brochure, uh, be sent out to every home in town on our website and also the online registration opportunity again to get your permit, uh, probably by the beginning of March. So another exciting season. And again, the center is, uh, never been more busy, uh, for recycling, for organic debris, for firewood, for mulch, uh, and more things to come. So, uh, they're a good year. Thanks to Greg O'Neal and Ridge U. Banks for doing a great job, uh, running that center the past couple of years. Um, and lastly, just, um, you know, even though it's winter and we might be getting snow, uh, this weekend, um, utility work has started and it's actually going on not only by, um, American Water, which are, sorry, American, Lizard Town Gas, which I mentioned last meeting, they have some of their work they got a head start on, which is great. So that's, uh, gas main replacement work. And of course, any road that they are touching will be repaved, uh, the sections that they've cut into. Uh, American Water has also informed us, which recently got out on our website, about thirteen roads that there'll be, uh, doing, uh, water main replacements. Uh, uh, and then again, they'll be repaving those roads that they, uh, touch. Uh, and of course, uh, we'll be having our road program, uh, announced, uh, I assume, very soon. So it looks like, uh, between utility work, some county work this year on road paving on their roads and our, uh, potential roads list, which is still not finalized, but in the realm of thirty roads to be touched, either whole roads or sections of roads. We could have upwards of seventy-five different roads, uh, or full roads touched this coming year between utility, most of them, you know, utility jobs, either uh, finishing up their work and repaving. But again, another aggressive year to really, uh, get the goal of repaving roads and, uh, uh, then take an assessment of our roads again this year to see what our, our average PCI pavement condition index score is, which was surely much higher than it was when it was taken in two thousand and nineteen. So uh, again, more to come on, uh, the capital front and, and paving, but, uh, a lot of utility work going on and, uh, please go to our website. Uh, we put up a new, um, uh, item on the carousel front page about utility work and road paving. So you'll see the latest there for information and a reminder, utility work, uh, we do, of course, give them permits and so forth, but please contact utilities, their name, uh, the person who's managing each job, the phone number and email address of each Lizard Town Water and Lizard Town, or American Water, Lizard Town Gas people are on the website. And you can contact them directly if they have any issues or, uh, you know, other issues like access to your home, et cetera. So a lot of work going on, but exciting, a lot of paving going to be going on this year. So, uh, that's it for now, Mayor.
That's great. Um, so, uh, good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us online. Um, I do remind everybody that public comment will only be accepted on Zoom and that we're live streaming it on Facebook just for the viewer, your viewing pleasure. Uh, a little update on COVID nineteen, uh, which is good news. We have seen a substantial improvement in COVID trends since our last town council meeting just two weeks ago. Today, hospitalizations declined for the seventh consecutive day and the seven, and the state's seven-day average for new confirmed positives test is now down forty-seven percent from a week ago and twenty-nine percent from a month ago. So at his COVID briefing yesterday, uh, Governor Murphy said that the state health officials are optimistic about the declining rate of transmission and the test positivity rate. And greater news is that overall hospitalizations are dropping significantly. So it's over the past week. Uh, but it is still important, as great as this decline is, it's important to note that these numbers are still higher than where they were with the previous two surges. So the health officials continue to stress, you know, get your booster shots, make sure you're vaccinated. Um, and obviously, you've heard the chances of hospitalization or death from COVID is three times lower than having just the initial vaccination if you have a booster. So get vaccinated, get boosted, continue to max mask up so we can keep this trending in the right direction. I'm hoping if we can keep up this momentum that we can return, uh, return to in-person council meetings in the near future, maybe even two weeks, fingers crossed. Um, so we will be reporting the full Westfield weekly numbers on Friday, uh, in my mayor's update. Um, and I'm actually going to hand it over. We have a bit of a budget update, so I'm actually going to hand it over to, um, uh, our finance chair, Councilwoman Hapgood, to give, uh, just a little update on the budget process and some things that we're, uh, look, uh, voting on tonight.
Okay, great, great, Mayor. Um, I think you're referring to the change to the sewer fee ordinance.
Yep, and the, and the budget meeting.
And then I'll also talk about the, I'll also talk about the budget meeting that's coming up.
Perfect.
So let's start with the sewer fee ordinance. Um, tonight, we're hearing an ordinance on first reading regarding our sewer fees. Um, and I think it's important for everyone to understand, because we've already gotten some questions from residents, that this ordinance is not setting or implementing any new rates, rather it's amending the current not-to-exceed rates that exist in our ordinance, that are in our current ordinance for annual sewer fees. Um, the last time that this ordinance was updated was in two thousand and fourteen. Um, as you may recall, the sewer fee was raised in two thousand and twenty in order to bring the town subsidy back to its original intended level of fifty percent after many years of increases issued to the town by the Raway Valley Sewerage Authority, the RVSA. We're anticipating the RVSA will raise their rates again in two thousand and twenty-two due to rising costs. And when that information becomes available from the RVSA, um, we'll be able to make a decision, um, you know, in our finance policy committee and with, um, our town administrator and our CFO as to whether we will need to implement a new rate increase um, in any of the residential or commercial bills. Any new rates, though, if needed, will then be voted on by resolution at an upcoming meeting. And in parallel, we're continuing to look at the viability of implementing a consumption-based sewer fee model in two thousand and twenty-three, which would allow us to issue bills based on usage rather than the flat fees that exist today. Um, this would increase the fairness in our minds and also provoke, promote water conservation, um, which is consistent with our sustainability efforts. Um, so if anyone has any questions about the sewer fee ordinance, um, feel free to come up to the mic during the public comment and we'll, um, make sure to answer them. Um, and then I also wanted to, um, remind everyone that it's my favorite time of the year, budget season. Um, and the finance, finance policy committee and I as the chair, along with our town administrator, CFO and department heads are hard at work reviewing our two thousand and twenty-one performance and planning for this, um, current year. As part of that process, I invite you to come to our annual budget review meeting that will, that will be held this Thursday night at seven PM. And we'll be virtual, unfortunately, um, but, um, I encourage everyone to zoom in. Um, I started this meeting four years ago as the town's version of a shareholders meeting, where we report back to you on how we did last year against the two thousand and twenty-one budget, provide you with a sneak preview of some of the things that we're going to be facing in our two thousand and twenty-two budget process and solicit input from all of you residents, um, prior to us really engaging in the formation of the budget for this, uh, year, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, this is the fourth year that we've provided this public meeting forum as part of the administration's ongoing commitment to a transparent and public municipal budget process. Um, and you'll be able to find, um, the Zoom link to, um, join us on Thursday night on the town website. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And actually, I'm now going to throw it over to Councilman Mark Parmally, because there's some things we are going to be voting on tonight that are coming out of his committee, the, uh, um, the, uh, the CRTP. So I'm going to hand it over to you, uh, uh, Mark.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor. Okay, yeah, so we have a couple of things we're going to be voting on tonight. The first one is uh, voting on a resolution authorizing the release of, uh, some funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, uh, to ARC of Union County to be used towards the development of a single-family home at nine oh one Morris Avenue here in Ward Two. I went through some of these comments earlier, but I'll just go over them again in case, uh, I went through these comments during the committee meeting an hour ago, but I'll just run through them again in case there's anyone that hasn't, uh, heard them. But just for background, there's, uh, there's two, two kind of broad points here. First of all, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund currently has over two million dollars in its account and it's accrued over contributions that we've obtained from developers. And so the, the fund itself, the trust fund is not subsidized by any taxpayer money. And tonight's proposed transfer is for a hundred and ninety, just under a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. And the town of Westfield's housing commissions reviewed the request, um, from ARC for those funds and is recommending the award of that funding. And then as for the property itself, ARC, uh, purchased it, uh, nine oh one Morris Avenue from a private owner in December. Public records indicate that the sale price just for vacant land was for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's prior to any proposed uh, dedication of funding from the town. That is, ARC bought the property without any knowledge of whether or not the town would agree or would at least, uh, consider, uh, granting it the funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So ARC intends to build a single detached home, which would contain, uh, four beds. Um, and that the home is going to look, uh, like every other home in the neighborhood. All zoning requirements such as building setback height, coverage requirements are all the same for all the other properties in the area in which, uh, this, this RS-ten zone district, which the neighborhood is located. And one of the things that's important here to note is that ARC's entitled as a right to build this proposed home on the property without any special approvals from the town. And as long as it conforms, there's nothing the town could do to prohibit ARC from completing the project, even if it wanted to. Um, that, there's some discussion earlier on about the fact that, uh, neighbors need, uh, notice, you have to provide two hundred feet of notice in the event you want to make any changes, uh, to your property. The only have, the only time you have to do that is if those changes are not conforming or require a variance. And only in the event of, uh, that ARC would need a variance would that notice be required. Otherwise, um, they wouldn't have to do, uh, they don't have to provide that kind of notice at this time. Um, some other neighbors have asked, um, uh, about a subdivision of the property. That subdivision was approved by the planning board in two thousand and sixteen at the prior owner's request, uh, before anyone in this council was elected, and it didn't involve ARC at the time. Community residents like this are permitted use in all residential districts of a municipality pursuant to New Jersey's Municipal Land Use Law. There's no plan at all at this time to develop any of the town-owned properties that join nine oh one Morris and some of which are part of the Wetlands District. And so as part of our continued priority to fulfill, to responsibly fulfill our affordable housing requirements, this transfer is going to help further the goal specified in our settlement with Fair Ha, uh, Share Housing Center to work with nonprofit affordable housing obligations to create twenty additional homes, half of those for families by the end of two thousand and twenty-five. This is a goal that was approved by the Superior Court of New Jersey when they approved our settlement and housing plan. And the use of these trust funds to assist nonprofits like ARC in creating affordable units is then only called for in our, in our affordable housing plan, but it's common occurrence um, in other municipalities and as well. And we have a number of these kinds of group homes in Westfield already, all of which have the appearance of detached, single-family homes. And unless someone pointed them out to the, to you, I, I, I don't think that you'd know that it was, uh, that it was a, uh, that it was a group home. And then beyond our actual obligations, I continue to believe that diversity among our housing and our residents, as well as prioritizing inclusivity, are important guiding principles. And I'm happy with this proposal. Look forward to the opportunity to welcome these new residents uh, to Ward Two, um, and to Westfield. The second thing we have on tonight, um, is, uh, on for first reading and is an ordinance amending the public comment period. Um, and the proposal is to amend the time from ten minutes, uh, to five minutes. And, you know, one of the things in Westfield that we're fortunate to have is, uh, a, a high level of public engagement that we see here. And with many topics of importance to residents discussed at each meeting, our goal is to really create an opportunity for as many members of the public to speak as possible, um, which gets more challenging if every speaker chooses to use their full ten minutes. And the, the code review and town property committee, of which I'm, I'm the chair, have reviewed this issue and obtained information from Munich, Union County municipalities showing that almost all have a limited three to five minutes, which is also standard across much of the state. So that's Berkeley Heights, Cranford, Elizabeth, Fanwood, Garwood, Hillside, Kennelworth, Linden, Mountainside, New Providence, Plainfield, Raway, Roselle, Roselle Park, Scotch Plains, Springfield, Summit, Union, Winfield Park and the county itself all have time limits of five minutes or less. And so, uh, in reviewing those timeframes, uh, the committee, both in its two thousand and twenty-one and twenty-two configurations, um, unanimously agreed on a bipartisan basis that five minutes is a prudent approach that allows for both ample speaking time per person as well as allows for more speaking, uh, speakers at the microphone each meeting. And, you know, with the anticipated action and, uh, many important initiatives in this year and the years to come, it's going to be valuable to hear from as many members of the public as possible so that all points of view are recorded, um, as part of any legislative, uh, this mission, decision-making process. And so that's, um, what we have on the table today.
Thank you. Lots coming out of that committee, um, Councilman. Uh, and just in closing, I just want to remind everybody that on February third, uh, next week, there is, uh, please join the MLK Association of Westfield, who has partnered with the Human Relations Advisory Commission for Community Discussion and Title Disrupt Hate, working towards the exclusive Westfield. Um, the objectives of this discussion, which includes, I know, our police chief and members from the school district, including the superintendent, are to reflect on recent incidents of hate and discuss actions that all residents can take to create an inclusive Westfield. So you can either attend in person or Westfield High School or via live stream, and there'll be, you can find additional details on our website. Um, and then just one final thing, uh, regarding police military equipment. Uh, this has been a great initiative by the chief. Tonight, we are voting on a resolution to authorize participation in the law enforcement support officer called LSO program in order to authorize disposal of the remaining military equipment acquired through the program over many years that is no longer needed. Many of you, many of you may remember, uh, there's lots of, uh, military equipment that used to be in the conservation center. And under Chief Balaure's leadership in nineteen and twenty, uh, the participation in LISO allowed us to begin the process of disposing many of these pieces of, of unused equipment. Some of it could be sold, some of it could be donated, uh, but it cleared out an area in the conservation center, which now is utilized to support the expanded recycling efforts. When you go over there, provide storage for our DPW operation. So, um, it's been great to really watch GPW Director Greg O'Neal and Chief Balaure work together um, to create, uh, my husband was at the conservation center this past weekend. I was like, wow, it really is an unbelievable operation and really thanks to the efforts of, of our, of our leadership team. Um, and while we're speaking about police, I would be remiss, um, you know, if I, if we think about the many aspects of law enforcement and the incredible job that our police department performs every day, I do want to take a moment to acknowledge the tragic loss of two of NYPD's finest over the last few days. Officers Jason Rivera and unfortunately learned today, Wilbert Mora, uh, who passed away today as well. Um, we're both young, full of promise and their lives were taken from them in the light of duty by, in the line of duty by a senseless criminal act. And it's just a stark reminder that not only of the dangers of a career in law enforcement, but also the bravery and commitment demonstrated by police officers every day in every town. It's where no one is immune. And I'm just always grateful for the professionalism of our Westfield Police Department protecting our community and just want to, um, send our condolences certainly to the NYPD, but just a reminder how grateful we are, um, for our own folks, our department here at home. We are grateful beyond measure. So with that, uh, let's get to work on tonight's agenda. Um, uh, first, first, we have a very exciting appointment to make. Um, we had somebody from the, uh, DWC recently had to step down due to work commitments. So we are appointing, um, that replacement today, and I'm thrilled to propose the appointment of Les Trent, who's well-known to many to the Special Improvement District to fill an unexpired term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. May I have a motion to accept this appointment?
So.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think Les might be on the phone if he wants to say hello. Do you see him? Are you there, Les? Oh, there he is.
Yeah, Les. Hi.
Congratulations. We, we just wanted to say congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's, it's an honor and I look forward to the hard work and, uh, and, you know, I love, I love Westfield. I love downtown and, and I'm looking forward to, um, to doing whatever I can.
Well, we appreciate it. So thank you for your service to Westfield.
You are welcome.
Thank you, Les.
You're welcome. See you guys.
So all in favor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oppose? This motion is carried. Um, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the town council conference and regular meetings of January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two?
So.
The second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose? This motion is carried. Now it's time for open discussion by citizens. Please virtually raise your hand to make your comment on any subject on which we have jurisdiction and be sure to state your name and address for the record.
Anyone else be heard? Please raise your, raise your hand virtually and we'll call upon you. Okay, uh, Mr. Lieberman?
Hi, yes, uh, I'm Steve Lieberman at, uh, nine oh one Cranford Avenue. I mentioned, uh, some, my question's regarding the group home that's planned on Morris Avenue, uh, for today's vote. Um, yeah, I mentioned some of my points in the earlier meeting, but, uh, one of the ones I was still wanting to hear about is, well, this is a single property. I'm concerned about whether this could be part of a larger plan by any organization, not just for empty lots, but for any existing homes. The way the town distributes funds makes it more likely for an organization to be able to come in and buy multiple properties in a single neighborhood at a market price that other buyers were not willing to pay. Uh, this sounds like this decision's made entirely by ARC and the town has no input at all. Is that true? Does the town provide funds to organizations and doesn't have a way to suggest, uh, perhaps that maybe, um, to integrate things in neighborhoods, it should be, um, you know, decided, at least if it's like, you know, in multiple in one area or multiple spread out or whatever, you know, is sort of deemed um, right. But I'm just curious, what is the town's input into this process? That's, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Anyone else like to be heard? Uh, we have, uh, Mrs. Lindberg.
Hi, my name is Jean Lindberg. I live at five twenty-eight Grove Street. Up until now, elected officials at every level of government have failed to adequately address the impact of climate change. So it is up to you to consider the climate change crisis with every decision that you make. There are three strategies that will help you with this task. The first is the precautionary principle, which states, when an activity raises threats of harm to human health or the environment, precautionary measures should be taken, even if some cause and effect relationships are not fully established scientifically. In this context, the proponent of an activity rather than the public should bear the burden of proof. There is a proposal, as you know, to install synthetic turf athletic fields at Edison Intermediate School and the Memorial and Elm Street Fields. The plastic grass blades and backing material contain PFAS, a class of chemicals which do not break down over time, have been linked to numerous health issues and environmental concerns and bioaccumulate in humans and other living creatures. Instead of adding four new synthetic turf fields to the three, which already exist in Westfield, the precautionary principle suggests exploring safer alternatives such as organically maintained, modern grass athletic fields designed and installed by a sports field management expert. Proponents of synthetic turf claim that it is safe because it has been in existence for fifty years, has been in use at Kaler Field for over fifteen years and is prevalent in surrounding communities. But those claims, no matter how many times they are repeated, are irrelevant and do not prove product safe, safety. This is doubly true when it is known that the materials contain known carcinogens and release greenhouse gases. The second strategy is to determine whether the claimed benefits of the proposals make sense. It sounds simple, but it can be really difficult to discern fact from fiction, especially when it comes to environmental hazards and climate change. Synthetic turf is installed outside where it is expected to withstand the elements and daily usage for eight to ten years. Does it make sense that new synthetic turf fields are biodegradable? Or is this claim just another form of greenwashing by the synthetic turf industry? The amount of plastic used to construct one synthetic turf field is equivalent to three point two million single-use plastic bags, the same type of bag that will no longer be available in New Jersey, starting on May fourth. With that thought in mind, does it make sense to install any new synthetic, synthetic turf fields in Westfield, which has set being a premier, sustainable town as a key objective for two thousand and twenty-two? The Edison Field Project is projected to cost nine million dollars. But for that same amount of money, organically maintained, modern grass fields could be installed at every Westfield school. Does it make sense to spend nine million dollars to enable a few hundred travel team athletes to practice on two synthetic turf fields? Or would that money be better spent on upgrading every board of education property, which would benefit all of the nearly six thousand students who currently attend Westfield schools? The third and final strategy is to consider whether your decisions create collateral damage. Replacing nearly six acres of natural grass with plastic carpet and ground-up tires will deny current and future EIS students the well-documented cognitive and mental health benefits provided by spending time outdoors in natural settings. It will be nearly impossible to keep pieces of plastic grass and crumb rubber particles from migrating off the field and into the school building. Therefore, EIS students and staff will be exposed to the health hazards associated with synthetic turf throughout the school day. Finally, lifelong Westfield, one of the mayor's advisory councils, has a goal of helping Westfield residents age in place. The plan to install synthetic turf fields with stadium-like towers in residential neighborhoods is not in keeping with this noble goal. The current plans send a clear message that youth travel team athletes are more important than the older residents who want to remain in their homes, free from bright lights, loud noises and extra traffic at night. In closing, I hope that you will remember that the decision you make as members of the Westfield Town Council will have a ripple effect that extends far beyond Westfield, New Jersey and this moment in time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Lindberg. Uh, anyone else like to be heard? If you'd raise your hand virtually, we can call upon you. Anyone else like to be heard? Uh, we have, yes, we have, uh, Carrie. Hello? Are you there? Carrie, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, sorry, name, name and address, please.
Sorry, I was, uh, on mute, didn't realize it. My name is Carrie Murphy. I'm at five zero two Cotting Road. And I just want to address the, um, proposal that just came up in regards to the council meetings and residents' time at the mic going from ten to five minutes, essentially cutting our time in half. Um, I don't ever recall people not really having an opportunity to have a turn at the mic. It sounds a little bit. It sounds a little bit like a made up problem. Um. There were maybe two or three times that I recall, and I wasn't on every single call. Where there were a lot of people who wanted to speak. It was specifically when you brought up the idea of Westfield opening up a cannabis dispensary. I know there was a lot of input there. But there were also a lot of people who weren't residents of Westfield who spoke. So that's certainly got in the way of Westfield residents speaking. Um, there was the, and the continual. Number of people who get up to talk about the turf field of dreams proposal. And then the most recent Ferris Place development announcement. And rightly so, these are really big ticket items for our town. Um, and you know, generally speaking, most other meetings. See very few people at the mic. This is the one and only time we as residents have a public forum to share any questions or concerns. That we may have about different initiatives being brought up. It's not like you're answering our questions, but it's just the time for us to have. To, you know, to, to bring it out into the public. Um, and it feels like you're trying to shorten our time. If this moves forward, I would suggest that our voices and our opinions are being drowned out in this town. Slowly but surely, I feel like we're losing our voice. In my opinion, the residents' views will matter less and less. To me, it feels a little like silencing of the lambs and it just. To, to, to take our time away when we have so little time during a public forum. I, I'm, I'm opposed to it and I hope other people speak out.
Great. Thanks, Mrs. Murphy. Uh, anyone else like to be heard? Raise your hand virtually, we can call upon you. Anyone else? Go once. Going twice. Okay, uh, Mary, close the public hearing.
Okay, hearing none. I closed this portion of the meeting and, um, we'll just, uh. Uh, address the few comments that came up. So Mr. Lieberman asked about the town's input. Um, into the ARC project and, and it is a reminder, I think he mentioned it, is that that. Per, that property was being purchased irrespective of the town's involvement. Um, and, uh, the, they could, they would have purchased that regardless of whether they were getting contributions from the town, but I think. The Housing Commission all agree that this was a project and certainly worthy of the developer contributions that could, that make up our fund. And I don't know if Don, if you have anything to add regarding what that process is and what the town's involvement, and I think you mentioned that. About the possibility of putting more group homes or something in the area, and maybe you can shed a little light on that.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately the, the town does have the right to choose who it gives funding to and for what, uh, project. So. I think if there was a concern over an over concentration of a certain type of unit where it wasn't appropriate. Um, the town could take that into consideration. Um, I, I think the concern that I've heard, um. Is that there, there are a number of town owned parcels on Morris. Um, and I think people are wondering what is going to happen with those. Um, Councilman Palmerly mentioned that some of those are, are have wetlands constraints. I believe they're all in a flood zone. Um, but there are no plans that I'm aware of for sale of those lots for any purpose. They're simply owned by the town. Um, I, I believe those are the, the questions, um, that were asked, Mayor.
You're on mute, Mayor.
Um, and just, and thank Mrs. Lindberg for her comments and, um. And then just lastly to address Ms. Murphy's comments, um, actually I, I think her comments actually made the case. On why we want to shorten it so that we could actually create opportunities for more people to come. I have gotten specific feedback from people who have said they have not come or they didn't stand in line to wait their turn. On, uh, to hear, to stick around and give comments as the night wore on and, um. And would have liked to and ended up leaving and calling separately. So. I think what you said, instead of, I think what you said, silencing voice is quite the contrary. We're actually hoping that if we shorten the time, people will be more inclined. To approach the microphone and come to our meetings because they know that, uh, they might have a greater opportunity to speak. And knowing that not everybody can, especially on meeting, uh, things of significant importance. That could potentially go very late in the evening. So this is our way of encouraging people to come and speak. Um, and, uh, and that's what we hope, that's what we hope. And I'm glad, and, and a point taken, I think your comments were less than two minutes. So. Uh, we can, public comment is, is great. We can take all those comments and I think four, five minutes is actually. More than adequate. Um, and I've certainly done my own, had my own discussions with mayors around the state, asking what their protocols were. So. Um, so with that. Um, I think we'll go on to bills and claims. Councilwoman Havegood.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Um. I would like to move bills and claims the amount of five hu- eight hundred and fifty two thousand, six hundred dollars and eleven cents.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
I.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Uh, next on the agenda is reports of standing committees, beginning with the Finance Policy Committee. Councilwoman Havegood.
Uh, thank you again, Mayor. I have fourteen resolutions, thirteen of which I'd like to move as a package. One, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant for DOB licenses for December twenty twenty one. Two, a resolution establishing a custodian for the administration petty cash fund. Three, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant to refund various street opening cash bonds. Four, a resolution authorizing the CFO to prepare warrants for postage payment in connection with tax assessment notices to property owners. Five, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw check for the balance of escrow monies. Six, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrants for overpaid taxes for twenty twenty one. Seven, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrants for twenty nineteen pursuant to Tax Court of New Jersey. Eight, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant for fourth quarter construction officials state permit fees. Nine, a resolution authorizing the CFO to issue warrants for special district taxes. Ten, a resolution authorizing the CFO to issue warrants for Union County Open Space Taxes. Eleven, a resolution to set compensation for ward, for the ward commission. Twelve, a resolution requesting permission for the dedication by Ryder for a self insurance program. And thirteen, a resolution to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract with NGD, NJDOT. For Prospect Street Striping Improvement Project.
May I have a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried.
And then lastly, Mayor, I'd like to move a resolution authorizing the CFO to make a budget transfer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Palmerly?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey? Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yeah.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
Lastly, I'd like to move general ordinance number two zero two two dash zero one on first reading. An ordinance to amend the code of the town of Westfield, chapter twenty.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Palmerly?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey? Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried. Next is the Public Safety, Transportation and Parking Committee. Councilman Boys.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would like to move a resolution authorizing the Westfield Police Department. To participate in the, uh, previously discussed law enforcement support officer. LESO ten thirty three program.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Next is the Code Review and Town Property Committee. Councilman Palmerly.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move a, uh, resolution authorizing the release of funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to the ARC. ARC of Union County to be used towards development of a single family group home.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Palmerly?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey? Councilwoman Mackey?
Don frozen?
Sorry. Better internet.
Eddie, yes? Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yeah.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion has carried. Councilman Palmerly.
And also, uh, thanks, Mayor. I'd also like to move general ordinance number, uh, two zero two two dash oh two. At first reading, an ordinance to amend the section of the code of the town of Westfield regarding addressing council.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, Mayor, I just want to say, uh, in my twelve years on council. I never found an issue with, uh, residents, uh, having the willingness to speak. Uh, I know there's a lot of important topics this year such as the Edison Park, uh, Edison Field Proposal. As well as the, uh, municipal lot development. So I do feel we should keep it, uh, to ten minutes. Uh. I always perceive Westfield as a leader, not a follower. But, um, for that reason, I'll be voting no.
Uh, okay, uh, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Palmerly?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
No.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey? Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yeah.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried. Councilman Palmerly?
Oh geez, I'm sorry.
You got one more.
Uh, lastly, I'd, uh, like to move general ordinance number two two, I'm sorry, two zero two two. Dash zero three on first reading and ordinance amending Article sixteen exterior signs of the land use ordinance of the town of Westfield.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Palmerly?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey? Councilman Contract?
Can I hold up a sign? Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yeah.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes. All right, I think that's a wrap. Um, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Opposed? This motion is carried and this meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Good night.